You have to say something.
Would you like to call the meeting to a close, please? Roll call.
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments?
None on the adjourned items.
Notice an executive.
The executive session was held this evening at five for the purposes of real estate.
There is also an executive session held on September 30th to discuss real estate.
Approval minutes. So moved.
Second. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Communications.
None.
Managers report.
The only item I have is an announcement that the November 4th council meeting will be canceled.
All right, on to old business. Ordinance and third final reading and amendment to fire pension ordinance.
No changes since the last reading. As a reminder, this is just changing the vesting percentage to be consistent with what was in the previous ordinance.
Are we moved to adopt?
Second.
Oh, roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meaville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 161 of the Meaville Municipal Code, known as the Fire Men's Pension Fund, providing for an effective date, severalability, and a repealer. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Discussion of zoning amendment, amending off-street parking requirements.
As you know, every now and then I give you a package of things that we've discovered in zoning over time to consider to improve our ordinance. First of these, given how much we've been talking about parking, is a recommendation to amend our off-street parking requirements principally to eliminate the requirement to at 130802, saying that residential uses shall provide a minimum of one off-street parking space for dwelling unit or rooming unit, whichever is greater. That provision applies to all residential units in all zoning districts right now. On closer inspection, if we were to try to apply that, practically speaking, that would interfere with a lot of redevelopment of vacant spaces, most prominently in the desire for upper-story residential in the downtown buildings. To strictly apply that, you'd either be prohibited from redeveloping any apartment upstairs unless you provided an almost impossible off-street parking space on the same lot or applied for a variance. My understanding is council would prefer to remove unnecessary restrictions and unnecessary applications like that. So also in other, I bring up the downtown mixed use as the most prominent example, but it can apply elsewhere.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a small voice.
I have small ears, so.
So while this is a vast improvement, I believe, over the 1994 ordinance, which applied different parking standards to all manner of uses, doing more research on this and how parking requirements are applied right now, strictly speaking, a lot of this might be unnecessary and interfere with reasonable redevelopment of existing buildings and vacant storefronts in the city. So I'm just asking your consensus to bring something more concrete along those lines before you.
I consent.
These would involve public hearings to adopt, correct?
They would, yes.
Any other questions?
The planning commission discussed, I didn't make it to the last planning commission meeting. My apologies, was this discussed by planning commission yet? Or is the idea that council discusses, then it goes before planning?
That would be good.
Yeah, we'd like your permission before we put more work into this.
Gotcha, okay, so it would go before planning commission?
Yep.
After this?
Yep, I prepare amendment, bring it to planning commission, we bring out recommendations back to you.
In the ordinance, is there a certain distance? And is it like that specific, like if you're this far, you have to have a parking place?
Yes.
Okay, so we do want to look at that.
Yep, right now it says parking spaces shall be located on the same lot with the principal use unless the zoning administrator determines it is impractical. To provide parking on the same lot, in which case the zoning administrator may permit off-lot parking spaces within 500 feet of the lot under the following circumstances, and then there's following circumstances. It's a paragraph.
The house right across the street from me recently developed, it's a triplex, and paved, had to pave over its entire backyard to meet the parking minimum, I think, I think is why they did that. And now there's like a family who lives there who doesn't have a car but has a kid, so there's no yard, but there's like plenty of space for a car they don't have, so anyway, I think it makes a lot of sense to give developers or property owners the ability to choose if it's the right investment or not.
I agree with that.
Thanks.
Any other comments, some questions?
All right, thank you, we'll move forward.
Discussion zoning, amending use to allow pet daycare.
Or is there?
If we can.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted for that, amending use, no, various amendments to zoning map, sorry.
All right, so even at the time the zoning ordinance was adopted, there had been outstanding recommendations to change certain parcels over to different districts before you, including most recently, I believe Jim commented this before, change for the Velezki's store area from, I think it is MU2 to something more appropriate, given the commercial nature of the area and how its designation there is outdated, there was a communication to council that came from. So since, so in your packet, we can discuss more, there's, I would recommend extending the Diamond Park Heritage District to include the corner lot and the Old Masonic Building. It's, they've inherited the MU3 district, which, as you recall, where smoke shops and such are allowed, and it did not seem to be council's intention to have a smoke shop at the corner of the diamond. So I believe that was just, we missed a few things, as it were. Also importantly, I believe, is to include the historic district as an overlay district in our map, even if just a placeholder, but also because the historic district is relied upon for one provision in our signage section prohibiting electronic signs with movable copy and screens. So that would clarify that a bit.
It's my understanding that these changes might not require a public hearing?
Yes, so traditionally, when we rezone a parcel or a very small, very small area, and I'm sorry, I need to, I need to correct myself, that would require a public, public hearing, any zoning amendment would. The difference is that if we were to rezone one parcel or just a small parcel, a number of parcels, typically you'd have to personally notify both the property owner and all the surrounding property owners, and then also post a notice, like with a stake in the ground or something around the door, of that, and then have a hearing on that. But if you have a comprehensive set of changes that you're doing all at once, you don't need to do that personal notification and all the mailing costs that entails.
You would not have to notify the owner of the Masonic Building if you were making the change?
If it were a set of comprehensive changes, just like we didn't notify personally, give personal notice to everybody in town when we adopted the ordinance with all the changes in the map to begin with, now, I don't know what the threshold is. That will be a discussion with our solicitor.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people have adequate input and.
Yes.
I guess if you were rezoning the church and the Masonic Building, I'm not thinking in terms of the kind of building they are, wouldn't it make sense to rezone the post office building? Because they're all of a certain architectural style and vintage.
If you consent to us pursuing this, that will be a very rich discussion we can have.
If, if the people are given adequate notice and input, because after all, it is their properties.
Yes.
So we can, so what I'm understanding, you're saying, Peter, is that like if we're doing a comprehensive change, those require, those same requirements don't kick in, but we, we could just notify building owners, right? But we wouldn't necessarily have to like mail and post, right? Like it wouldn't be the same expense, but we could choose to go above and we have to know.
Yes.
Peter, with the.
Or not, or we have to.
With the car lot across the street from Velezki's and next to St. Mary's Church, would that be one of the changes contemplated?
It may be.
Because if I recall, the way it's zoned out, it's zoned residential, I think, MU1?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's MU2, there's.
Jason's saying two.
MU2. Yeah.
But Jason just raised two.
Yeah, I saw that.
There's, no, it's, it's actually GBM.
Oh, it is GBM?
Yeah, yeah, no, GBM.
I'm saying that just, he used a little bit of that.
That's okay, yeah, no, the GBM circum, like goes around the section where there are the detached homes remaining from old building around the block, and then it looks like it includes the car lots already, so.
Thank you.
And I mean, this is just council giving authorization to spend your time doing this?
Yes.
And engage planning commission or whatever other parties you would engage?
Yes.
To draft this, so there would still be discussion on what's included where and.
Very much discussion, yeah.
Jim?
What's up?
You guys have any questions, comments, so we, agreement that we'd like to move on then? Okay. All right. Now the discussion of amending use to allow pet daycare.
Also veterinary services, I have not been shy in saying that I think our table of uses could use a lot more scrutiny than was given during its initial preparation up to 2022. That's my opinion alone, but it has been brought to our attention that there is a specific gap of interest in the allowable uses where pet daycares and veterinary services are not specifically called out as allowable uses in the ordinance. We did try to make pet boarding and pet grooming clearer, but we omitted these two things. So the proposal is to unprepare another amendment that adds these allowable uses back in. So right now, they are only allowed as being, you know, a use not otherwise specified, as a conditional use in the economic development corridor, which means that if anybody wants to open up such a thing, they'd have to apply to you for a public hearing where you would say whether you would allow it or not, and then only in the EDC section on the opposite side, you know, around the French Creek Parkway. I don't think that was intended, and I meant to say Humane Society Veterinary Clinic in your notes, but it seems like an acceptable use that is in demand in the city. And I would request consent to present an amendment to you that brings it back into our ordinance as an allowed use.
I know I brought this up when we were discussing the ordinance and I suggested it, so, I won't say I told you so, but yeah.
Any other questions or concerns?
I don't know if I can, a client of mine is a forming dog daycare cooperative that came in front of the planning commission.
You do not have a conflict of interest because it affects a class of.
Sure.
Dog care owners, which is an exception to the ethics act.
Sounds good, let's allow these businesses in our town.
Yep.
So what is our consensus as council, do you want him to continue?
Yep, just authorize me to bring something more concrete before you.
Okay.
Snow walker.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution to ratify signatures for winter service agreements with the city of Meaville and PennDOT.
So this agreement is signed every five years with PennDOT, as council is aware, many of the city's streets are in fact owned by PennDOT. In winter, the city plows these streets rather than PennDOT, mainly for efficiency. Because of this, we enter into a winter services agreement with PennDOT where we receive financial benefit from PennDOT to do that planning.
Can you talk about the base rate? Okay. I get mainly, it's just like, are we adjusting, do we have the ability to adjust rates? And have we adjusted them to accommodate the fact that prices of everything is going up, including like what we're paying? Like what we charge PennDOT, I just want to make sure we're covering our costs.
Right.
If we happily.
We see forty thousand last year.
I might not be referring to the right thing either, it might not be the base rate specifically. The impetus is, are we covering our costs adequately? Expecting costs to grow up?
Yes.
Okay. Does PennDOT set that or do you?
PennDOT typically sets that.
Can we just take?
We just take.
Any other questions?
So we get a flat fee for this?
For snowmice, snow lane mice.
But it's no matter how many times, in other words, if the season begins October 15th, April 15th, and we have snowed tonight, we are not compensated per se for tonight.
No, it's an annual fee, that is basically being paid.
Basically, is that part of our fuel tax, liquid fuels fund, is that what's funding this, you know?
What funds PennDOT paying us for this? That I'm not sure.
Okay.
So when, are they paying the same amount?
It said increase two percent.
Every year, like after the agreement is signed?
Yeah.
Two percent for what? Five years, the contracts for five years. Do you know what they pay us for this?
Forty.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand last year. Just two percent, Jeff, you're on it.
Two hundred.
Thirty thousand.
It's awful.
Yeah, it's awful. Hope that's me.
Okay.
Yeah, this was a resolution. Are we in discussion or did we?
We moved second.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meaville ratifying the signatures on a winter services agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for 2025 through 2030. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
A resolution authorizing revision of FY 2022 Community Development Block Grant. Motion.
I also move.
I can second.
So this agreement, sorry, as with most construction projects, things tend to happen that cost extra money. So the roof, Fire Department roof project, in this CDPG program year of 2022, the city allocated sixty-eight thousand, a little more than that, to the roof project. There are some change orders included in your packet for some additional things, mainly revolving around the roof hatch that needed to be replaced and some piping that needed to be addressed. So in order to cover those costs, we would like to move the money from the Water Street project, which came in under budget, to the Fire Department roof project.
We do not need that money to complete the Water Street project?
At this time, we do not believe that we need that money. However, the money will stay in the CDPG program, and if we need to move it back to Water Street, we can do so.
So just out of curiosity, this money that's for the Water Street, what was it for? The access from what wasn't done, that we have the access of money?
We, when you apply for CDPG money, you apply based on cost estimates from an engineer. We applied for a set amount of money, when they went out to bid, the contractor actually came in under what we had anticipated, so there's that extra money in the project.
And this what, this is the stormwater project on Water Street?
Stormwater paving sidewalk.
Master has it torn up right now.
And is this, is this coming out of a few years of CDPG?
It is, it's three years of CDPG funding.
And as the project continues, you could encounter something that wasn't planned for or budgeted for and need this extra money?
That's correct, CDPG only allows you to alter from the base bid a maximum of fifteen percent. So we know that no matter what, you can't use more than fifteen percent more than what the bid came in as.
And there's kind of a, isn't, there's a window of time that we've got to use past CDPG dollars by, right? Like we need to use these ones.
The Fire Department roof needs, was also a multi-year CDPG project that dates back to 2021, I think. So this, that funding needs to be expended by the end of October, so we don't lose it.
It's coming in for budget, so that won't be a problem.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, we are in discussions, we need to roll call.
Roll call.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meaville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, authorizing a revision of the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant reallocation of funds. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
And next, be a resolution, designation of authorized signature for planning assistance. Motion.
So moved.
I think there might be.
There was one, either one prior to that.
Access submission.
A block grant, three-year community development. I'll move without you there.
Okay. Roll call. It's authorized, this submission of an adopt plan for EP2.3, EP25 Community Development Block Grant and three-year, three-year Community Development Block Grant Plan.
Who wants to make the motions?
I will move to authorize the submission, second.
This is the annual submission to DCD for CDPG funding. Our 2025 allocation was three hundred eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. This year, sixty thousand allocated to code enforcement, this helps to offset the wages of two part-time code enforcement officers and one full-time code enforcement officer, one hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and some change to paving on yet to be determined streets. These streets have to be LMI, low to moderate income, depending on what street, it can involve some income surveys. The city is leaning towards Market Street as part of the bigger picture downtown development, streetscape plans. There were some discussions with MRC today about such things. But I will note that in the future, if something changes, like a focus on housing or something, that can, this money can be reallocated through a modification to those projects. And then you have the city and county administration totaling thirty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-six and eighteen thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars respectfully.
Mary Ann, when we are allocating money and making plans for repaving, we coordinate with various public utilities and city utilities so that we don't tear up streets, only find out that we have deteriorated sewer pipes and be torn up a year later.
Correct, we try our best to coordinate and let at least others know that we're going to be doing a project. That's how the Water Street project came to be, with sewer work being done in addition to the paving. So we try our best, we can't always guarantee that, there's not going to be a national field digging up something, but.
Okay, so it says, it's things yet to be announced, so until now, someone could come in and say, hey, we'd like to have this street looked at to be.
It is possible, yes. Again, it has, there has to be very specific criteria, but yes.
Okay.
I'll just share with the rest of council, I did let Mary Ann and April know that I'm interested in seeing, right, we've named housing as a priority, certainly as a community development priority. Got our Housing Action Plan, there's still much work to be done there, so I would like to see housing projects show up in our CDPG plan, so I appreciate Mary Ann recognizing that like there could be some reallocation, and appreciate that you shared like what actually that would have to mean and look like to fit the CDPG guidelines and eligibility. Just naming that for the rest of council, that I would be interested in seeing that. I have been very glad to have seen that in different forms in the last few CDPG iterations. The roof on the shelter, the emergency shelter, there were a few other things that came to mind, so. I think it's valuable, we don't have a lot of funding towards things that we say are priority, so CDPG is like the closest we can to that.
And the only thing I'll note with that is just the biggest obstacle to allocate CDPG funding is a well fleshed out project idea. That's, so as soon as, I think there is some communication from the planning commission about wanting to prioritize their focus on the Housing Action Plan. So if that could help feed into a plan, then we could allocate the funding from CDPG to that.
Be interested to, particularly around housing, but if it were around paving or something else, to also look at our redevelopment areas that we have named and trying to make a concerted effort with these monies too.
So I know we, this has been brought up before, but I just, again, there are still sidewalks in the city that are in bad need of disrepair, regardless of whether they're owned by the landlord or the city.
I know at one time we had talked about if they were owned by landlord and they failed to repair, then the city would go in repairs, and can some of that CDPG money be used to do that? And then we go up, because there's, I mean, I see, I see senior citizens walking in the streets with their walkers or whatever because of the sidewalks, or it's just on disrepair, and with winter coming, it's going to get worse.
It is a possibility. Again, see, the problem with CDPG is it's so constricted on where you can use it. So we have explored and had discussions with the county who administers our CDPG programming of what that may look like. Again, low to moderate income areas, how can landlords apply, can tenants apply? There's some, there are a lot of questions that come with it, but it is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
The restriction of size of the project too.
Yes, there are a lot of questions that come with it.
So they look at, like, for paving, it's a street, for sidewalk, it might be four, you know, sidewalk pads. You can't just say sidewalks here, 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 and here.
Right.
It has to be, it's like limited to like three, and it would have to be a certain amount.
Yeah.
It's just some that I've been questioned about, something I'd like to be able to give somebody more of a, I don't know, answers. Any other comments, questions?
So, sorry, we, does it can fix the sidewalks and then fill the lean or what are we?
It would look like a, like a application process. So I think Titusville maybe had floated this at one point in time, a sidewalk repair fund essentially, so a landlord or something would apply, but you have to reach LMI income limits, so questionable if a landlord could apply for that funding. I'd say they meet that, go through the entire application process, there's a vetting process, if you meet all of the specified criteria, yes, and it would be, you know, however restructured it, doubtful it'd be a payback, because that's program income, then at that point, so it could be just a loan grant.
So it is possible, it would be an entire program that we would have
Yes.
develop to stand up something like that, that we do not have on the books.
Correct.
Right now, we just cite you.
Yes.
Should do a sidewalk program. Something's good.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess looking at the plan though, it sounded to me like, because the summary is we're going to do this, because it, I, did you, Peter, did you write the plan itself or is this?
I provided the cover.
You provided. Why is it, because you talked about sidewalk, street, and improvements, and then, and then the plans, the housing plans, it's like in the plan, I just felt like, this is like we're going to start here with these three things for this year, and it felt like it was like tossing everything out. I guess, correct?
Sorry, what?
Well, if you look at the plan, you know, it has like short-term, well, it just, it has the summary, this is what we think we should be doing now, and we're very aware of these other plans that we have that are important to us, including the Make Meaville Home, City of Meaville Housing Plan, Action Plan. So, yeah, I guess I felt like, crap.
The plan has to reflect previous projects and then what you are going to put in your application as a focus?
Yeah.
And expand on why and where you are citing that this is a need.
Yeah.
So, yes, correct?
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, resolution designate designation of authorized.
I think we need a vote.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meaville authorizing the submission of the 2025 Community Development Block Grant application and adopting the three-year Community Development Block Plan. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
All right, on to the next one. Resolution designation of authorized signatures for planning assistance. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Crawford County Planning is implementing a new policy requiring every municipality in Crawford County to designate one or more authorized signatories for official interactions with the county. This is intended to improve efficiency, ensure clarity in communications, and protect both the county and municipalities by confirming that only individuals duly authorized by the governing bodies may enter into contracts, execute documents, submit applications. So the staff suggestion is that myself, the mayor, and controller are all given the signatory authority.
Mary Ann, would this be all three of you or any one of the three?
It could be any one of the three.
Okay, so if you and the mayor are on the state visit Australia for eight weeks, what about our deputy mayor and whoever's acting city manager?
I, I think we could make some concessions
All right.
That we, the county would be.
All right, that's fine.
Australia or myself.
And this is just for, like, entering into official, official contracts and business, right? Like, we've got, Jason Stiles sits on county planning, and not that folks are like representing the city in interactions, but like, it's a small town and it's just like helpful to.
But yes, it's official documents, so we've, we've had issues in the past with submissions to the, the county for grant funding that wasn't known to us at the administrative level, so this helps to kind of clarify that, didn't make it more, everybody knows what's happening.
And this would apply also to like authorities and commissions? Is that part of the
Correct.
vision, is that they would have to kind of get the
Correct.
sign off? Makes sense.
Pardon?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meaville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, authorizing designated signatories to execute documents, submit applications, and request support on behalf of the municipality with the Crawford County Planning Commission. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Okay. Public comments on non-agenda items?
Yes, I have Jason Ramsey.
I have three minutes, right? Hi, I'm here to speak about the parking garage. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I forwarded a letter to council and, or to city management and to Autumn, which I think that you'll get a chance to read, but I just wanted to make sure, since it's a timely topic, that it gets, that it gets heard. So I'm reading the letter first, and then I get my own personal comments. So the letter is, I'm writing today on behalf of Meaville Planning Commission, we have reviewed information regarding potential courses of action regarding the parking garage and provided city planner Peter Grellow with our response via executive session. However, we felt it was important to provide a framework through which we arrived at our response that we would hope is applied to deliberations at the council level. This framework is made up of three guiding principles that informed our response. One, parking is not an attraction to people who want to live, work, and play in the city. Affordable and safe housing is, tourism is, and compelling places of commerce and work are. Two, monetary investment of taxpayer dollars by the city in secondary services like parks should be minimized wherever possible to protect our resources. And three, long-term city viability must be prioritized over short-term needs. Thank you for your work on solving the deferred maintenance issue before the city. And then my own personal kind of editorial, as a citizen of Meaville, I am embarrassed and exhausted for our city that we have spent so much time deliberating about parking. First, raising rates to the quote-unquote shocking fifty cents, and now the garage. And this is not towards any individuals here who have been dealing with the problem, that pretty much everyone in this room inherited from folks playing to kick the can down the road, down the road in years past. Thank you, everyone, for your passion on trying to get the parking garage fixed and working on it. This is not towards them. But what I do want to say is that Meaville should not take part in the suburban Ponzi scheme of free parking and short-term development, development model that will fail. What makes towns attractive is not empty gravel lots and slightly smoother roads, but compelling amenities. People will find places to put their cars. I hope we can move on from this topic and focus on the things that will serve the majority of citizens. Thank you.
Next.
Claudia Gilland.
I'm good, I got my answer.
Okay, she got her answer, so that is all. Deputy.
All right, we'll move on to council member statements.
I have nothing tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Gretchen?
I guess, I don't, I guess I don't have anything either. I didn't know about, Jason, do you have, do you want to, is it appropriate for him to share anything that the Planning Commission feels about the garage? Is that appropriate?
I think it did. I mean, we had executive session, and I can't, I don't think I can share that here.
I emailed the letters from the Planning Commission as well as their information to council.
I just didn't know.
It will be on
Okay.
the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
For next meeting.
That was my comment.
Yeah, Jason, thanks for coming and sharing. Appreciate the Planning Commission deliberating and, yeah, putting forward, I think, guiding principles is a, is a helpful approach to think about, like, why we are making decisions and like in what spirit, rather than necessarily like the, the decision in the moment. So it's helpful, so thank you. Thanks, staff, for everything you do all the time. And I had family come up for the witch walk this weekend, it was a lot of fun. Thanks to all the people who put it on. Downtown was very alive on Friday night, and that was, that was a lot of fun, so thanks to the organizers of that event. And, yeah, there's, I think before our next council meeting, there's like a, there's a harvest festival in Meaville.
With a pumpkin drop?
On the, with a pumpkin drop.
I asked that they put glitter in the pumpkins this year when they drop them, so the Fire Department.
Where do they drop them?
It'll be at the intersection of Market and Chestnut.
Okay. Could be our last one.
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's the eighteenth.
The eleventh.
The eleventh, right, this weekend. The eleventh, everyone should come downtown, that's fantastic. Yeah, thanks to the organizers of staff too, have fun. And Halloween parade, everyone mark your calendars, the twenty-fifth, you know, largest night type parade in Pennsylvania. Jamie was saying she wants to declare Meaville something, and my push is to make it Halloween Town, because I think that'd be, I had some stuff going for us here, but, thank you. And happy birthday, Larry, this week.
I have a happy birthday too.
I just want to thank everyone for being here, thanks staff for all that they're doing, here with his willingness and ability to get things, and staff to get things turned around, and questions answered, or paperwork prepared for us. It says a lot about all of their commitment, and I really respect and appreciate that, and it shows a commitment that they have to see Meaville be a better place. You know, a lot of, a lot of times we, being on city council, we hear nothing but complaints, which is part of the job, but it also makes me realize that, you know, as much as people complain, there's someone that has to actually sit and consider and listen to those complaints and look at the viability of them and see how legitimate they are and what they can do to, first of all, address it or alleviate that problem and make people feel that something is being done. So again, I give you guys credit and kudos for being able to do that and make people feel comfortable with that. Our attorney does a lot with, he's right there with us for questions and answers for us, and all of these guys on staff have gone overboard, and I'm just, I'm so happy to be able to be back here to work with them, and I just want to thank you guys. We'll call for a German, Neil.
I move to adjourn. Second.
You adjourn.
We all agree.
Aye, aye.